The time is now 7:30 and I would like to call our regular monthly meeting of the Downers Grove Public Library Board of Trustees to order. And just before we do the roll call, I just wanted to point out that in accordance with Public Act 101-0640, this meeting will be held in person by remote attendance and all votes will be taken by roll call. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty?
Here.
Trustee Gagani?
Here.
Trustee Humphries? Trustee Kuntia?
Here.
Trustee Stapleton?
Here.
President Greber?
Here, thank you very much. At this point, I'd like to welcome any visitors we have. We appreciate your interest in the library. We're now on to agenda item number four, approval of last month's minutes. Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding last month's minutes?
I have one thing to insert on number 10, the last sentence, to insert for quarantining materials after guidelines that was talking about the RAIL's guidelines that had changed that day, about the length of time for quarantining materials.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments regarding last month's minutes? Okay, do we have a motion to approve last month's minutes subject to the change mentioned by Julie?
I will move to approve last month's minutes.
Oh, second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve last month's minutes incorporating Julie's comment that has been seconded. Caitlin, could you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Gagani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries? Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
President Greber?
Yes, thank you very much. The minutes have been approved. We're now on to agenda item number five, financial matters. Julie, do you want to let us know how we're doing?
We're actually doing great. We are 67% approximately through the year. We have collected 62% of our property taxes. I did want to point out that we received the per capita grant amount in full in September, so you will see that hit the revenue side coming in your next month's packet. That is $61,516 approximately, and that is our principal income from the state of Illinois. Also, I want to direct your attention to the personal property replacement tax revenue. We were warned again that collections are expected to drop in the next fiscal year. Now, we anticipated that happening in 2020 and as you can see from that revenue line, that has not happened yet. But we are, we did continue to budget at that same level as 2019 because we are, we've been told repeatedly that that income is going to start to decline and could decline very sharply, very quickly. So I just wanted to make you all aware of that. And other than that, we are right where we're supposed to be. We've already talked about the expenditure lines that are over. Most of those are things that go in annual or quarterly increments. So we're doing really well.
Did the, did the per capita grant come in after?
Yes, it came in in September, so it will be reflected on next month's financial reports.
Okay. Great. I don't think I had any comments on the financial matters. Did anyone else have any questions or comments on the financials? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the financial matters as presented?
I'll move to approve the financial matters as presented.
Okay, I think we have a second from Mr. Humphries. We have a motion to approve the financial matters as presented that has been seconded.
Does Dave know his microphone's not unmuting each time? We should let you know that, Dave. We haven't heard you each time on the roll calls.
Yeah.
We haven't seen it go off.
Yeah. Yes, you really should unmute yourself so that we can make sure that that's in the record.
I'm sorry, I was off looking at the paperwork and didn't change it. I am now here and I second the motion.
All right, thank you. Okay, we have a motion to approve the financial matters as presented that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Gagani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
President Greber?
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved the financial matters as presented. We're now on to agenda item number six, public comment on agenda items. Do we have any submissions or public comments?
Hi, we have received no comments via the online How Do We Do forms.
Okay, thank you. We're on to agenda item number seven, public comment on other library business. And it sounds like we did not receive any comments. And so we'll move on to agenda item number eight A, new business, the architect proposal for 2021 roof replacement project. Julie, do you want to summarize the next, this agenda item?
So this is the main part of the 2021 project is, as you know, the roof replacement. The budgeted amount for that particular project is approximately $990,000. The architect is doing a flat fee at just under 3.4%. And that is fairly standard for a product, for a project of this size. And we do not have to go to bid on these due to our prior relationship with the, this particular vendor, and it is under the threshold for professional services contract in any case.
Julie, can you just summarize, I guess, how what they're doing now is different than what was? Because I know, I know, and it was a few years ago, so I'm just maybe my recollection is fading on this. But I know that they, that I think the same architect had put, had helped us with our strategic, you know, the, you know, the, you know, setting forth the priorities for building. And I was just, and I, and I recall there being a report done with respect to the roof back then that kind of estimated its remaining useful life. And I'm just sort of curious as to kind of what today, I mean, other than we fast forward in two or three years from then, is this just kind of a deeper dive or what exactly is?
Oh, this, this is the actual architectural, architectural plans for the replacement project. They had done the assessment as part of the capital needs plan. This is the actual architectural drawings that we have to submit to the village in order to get the building permit to do the, the entire project. They will also, they will do the full specifications and take care of the bidding process for us as well. That is typically part of the architect's professional services fee, and that fee is included. It's been provided for within that total project budget.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments regarding the architect proposal for the 2021 roof replacement project? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the architect proposal for 20, for 2021 roof replacement project?
Well, I'll jump in and do it. I move that we approve the proposed architectural services proposal for 21, 2021 roof replacement project as presented.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve agenda item 8A, the architect proposal for 2021 roof replacement project that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you please proceed with the roll call?
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Gagani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
President Greber?
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved the architect proposal for the 2021 roof replacement project. We're now on to agenda item 9A, the bylaws revisions. I think this is essentially the second of three readings. In the future, we'll only have two readings, thanks to Kim. Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding the proposed revisions to the bylaws? And Julie, just for my own sake, we do have one more opportunity. Like on the third reading, we could at that point make any final comments or revisions that we have at that point in time. Is that correct?
Well, technically, you're supposed to have the final texts of the amendments sent to each trustee with the agenda for the regular meeting at which they will be approved. So this, this should actually be your, your last chance to decide how you want those worded.
Okay. Does anyone want to use this opportunity to, as the last chance, make revisions to the bylaws?
And the only changes in this draft from the previous meeting is in 1.8, Article 8 amendments. So the rest you've already seen.
Right. Okay, any additional questions or comments on this agenda item? There's no vote required tonight, so we don't have any additional questions or comments. We can, we can move on. All right. We're now on to agenda item 9B, the library director evaluation form and process. Chris, do you want to just summarize kind of what, you know, kind of, you know, how you put together? I thought it was very well done. I like the timeline that you put together and just, I think the formatting in general was, was great. But I'd love to hear kind of your thought processes you were putting this together and your thoughts on us moving forward with it.
Sure, thanks, Jonathan. Yeah, I try, my, my way of working is really just like lay my thought process out. So one, that I remember what I was thinking as I was, you know, kind of going through the stuff. And then also so that, you know, when we look at the, the documents that are really in the end, what we'll be voting and deciding on and discussing, that there's kind of the baseline for, for why they look the way they do. So, um, that's, so that first page, the, the page that says, you know, the discussion and has the two links at the top, that's just kind of my summary of our understanding of, from their discussion from last meeting, kind of what the goals are of evaluating a library director and, you know, what the point of it is. It's not just to, you know, assign a numerical rating to the director and to, you know, give him a thumbs up or, you know, kind of a stamp of approval. It's really about this kind of continual improvement cycle. It's about, you know, aligning on goals and understanding where those are headed. And, and, you know, also, you know, kind of accountability in, in the case that we need to, to really pay attention to that. So, um, I put this information together with the assumption that we would have some time, maybe not at this meeting, as, as was pointed out in the agenda, but that we'd have an opportunity to, to talk through or at least to discuss or think together about what some of the specific wording is. Because I, you know, I put some stuff in there. Some of it was based on the forms that Julie and team provided last meeting from other libraries and kind of other examples. So some of it's based on that. But it still definitely could use some, you know, wordsmithing or further thought by, by all of us. I use, this is a starting point. And so I want to just make that clear that, you know, whatever wording kind of appears on that evaluation form is, is something that I think we should and probably want to work together to, to figure out the, the kind of right wording. But it'd be great if tonight, if we could go through, I made these assumptions and I, and a lot of the kind of decision making that went into creating those, those couple of forms are based on these assumptions. I wanted to make sure to check them with you all so that I'm, you know, I'm not saying, oh, the valuation criteria should be tied to the library director's current job description, that no one's like, are you kidding me? No, it shouldn't be. It should be tied to something else. I don't think that's the case. And, you know, and that's why I feel like it's a pretty safe assumption. But I wanted to make sure that the things that, that I was kind of basing this on were in fact valid and things that we all kind of agreed on and had a shared understanding around. Does that sound okay? Just kind of to work through those like few bullet points and then maybe look at the timeline real quick and then wrap that up for tonight and have a further kind of discussion at the, at the next meeting? Does that seem reasonable?
Sounds good.
Okay. Um, so the first assumption that it should be based on the library director's current job description. Does anyone have any thoughts about that?
Can I just, really, really quick before we go too deep into it? Just in order to make sure that we're completely inclusive, can we remove his or her performance and change it to their?
There, yeah.
Thank you.
Great comment, thank you.
And just to let you all know, as we're going through the policy manual revisions right now, that is one of the things that we're doing.
Great.
Thank you for that.
Um, my only, my only comment about the first assumption, it's one of the questions below two is, is the current job description, I'm not sure how old it is. Is it back from when you were hired, Julie? Is that? Or is it more updated than that? I forget.
That was updated along with all of the other staff job descriptions. So it was kind of winnowed down. The job description used to be like three and a half pages long. And so it was, we kind of winnowed it down to, to mirror the other job descriptions that we had.
Yeah. So I, I will say that there's a couple of things on the evaluation forms that probably aren't super well spelled out in the, in the current job description, maybe are more aspirational than, than kind of, you know, outlined there. And so that's something, again, we should discuss, maybe, again, not tonight, but that's something I just, I wanted to keep an eye on because I didn't want to hold these expectations up here and then, you know, whoever's in that director seat go, but that's not what it says I have to do. I want to make sure that that's, that's all aligned. Um, so the second assumption, it was, I feel like this one's a little bit more of a risky assumption that, that we need to be able to distinguish the performance of the director and the performance of the library. They're certainly tied absolutely, but that on some level, we need to be able to, to distinguish them. And that's kind of, so some of the questions, I feel like that, that's kind of where some of the questions got a little bit more specific about, um, like leadership qualities and more in a way like personal qualities versus like the library is hitting this mark or the library is doing this well. I think it's important and certainly goals should be tied to that, but I, I, I'm curious about what people think about that. I found that hard to, as I was thinking through some of the criteria, I was like, gosh, is that the library director or is that the library?
No, Chris, I don't, I'm, I want to hear other people's thoughts on this as well. But I thought that, to me, was one of the most kind of critical points is, you know, and it's one of the, one of the most difficult ones on here too, in, in making that distinction. But I mean, this year is the perfect example of, if you just looked, if we just looked at the numbers, like what, Julie, what's going on, you know? But there are obviously other factors affecting kind of what's going on at the library that Julie has no control over. She has to do the best that she can under the circumstances as they present themselves. And this is the one that's presenting itself in 2020, but who knows what 2021 or 2022 or, you know, other years may bring. So I, I think it's a critical point to be able to not just kind of like peg everything to numbers and saying, you know, in, in defining kind of Julie's job performance.
Yeah, thanks.
Did I miss the job description or where did you guys see that?
It was in last month's.
Okay. I'm sorry, I neglected to include it in this month's packet as well. It was in last month's.
No problem. And then just my second question was about these two links at the top, the draft evaluation forms and the draft process. I don't have access to those, just so you're aware.
The links probably are broken because they're now in a different format, but they're the documents that are immediately following this page.
Okay.
So the draft evaluation forms are the, what, the three pages following? And then the process, I think, is the fourth page after this, this page we're looking at right now.
Yes, you're correct, Carissa.
Thanks. Um, and the third assumption that we should only be able to, we should only evaluate elements to which we have some kind of direct knowledge. This was, so, you know, in looking at some of the forms that we, we got last time, there were some, I was like, oh yeah, this is great. I'd love, you know, this would be great to kind of understand. But then I said, well, I, for myself at least, I don't see Julie in that direct capacity. I don't have that ability to, to make a judgment on, trying to think of a good example. While dealing with the public necessarily, I don't see that a lot. I, I, you know, I see it occasionally at events and things like that. And I certainly know what the, you know, what you're reporting and things like that. But I don't, I don't feel like I could weigh in on that in a, in a real knowledgeable way. So that kind of, in terms of like what some of the categories for evaluation would be, I wanted to make sure that we were adhering, we're kind of sticking to the ones that we, as board members, have the opportunity to see and to experience directly rather than secondhand or, or kind of hearsay or whatever. It seems like that would be a fair way to proceed with that.
Well, and Chris, what I like about this one too, this, this is one that I kind of struggle with a little bit because we do just have kind of this window into the, you know, into the library. And then each of us has kind of more or less experience with the library, you know, through the month generally. But, you know, the one that I was thinking about, and I mentioned this, I think, last month is the, just like the, you know, Julie's, like the interaction with not the public, but also with just staff generally. But a lot of that, what's, what's sort of interesting is, is a lot of that, that information can sort of be gleaned from, you know, the submissions that the public sends us from time to time, that there will be, you know, things sent to the board and we see Julie's responses to those. And also you could look at kind of any, you know, whether it's a business or whatever the situation is. And if there's a massive amount of employee turnover, you could say, look, I don't know who's running that business, but there's a problem. And so there are other sort of indirect ways that I think that we can kind of see into those, you know, situations.
That's a good point. I, I think my point is I wouldn't want to put like undue weight on those things. We should put more weight on the things that we, we definitely have, have extract, you know, the budgeting and the kind of board relations and things like that. I think those things are things that we definitely should weight heavily because we can, we can speak to that very directly. But I agree with you, I know what you're saying exactly, Jonathan. It's, that's a point well taken.
Yeah, I just want to echo that, that it's a matter of waiting rather than, we don't totally disregard second or third hand information, but we wait much more heavily the firsthand information that we have, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Jonathan.
You're welcome.
Um, and I think to that point, I think the one thing on the evaluation criteria, the one, the one category that I felt, that I did feel was a little bit more removed was, was kind of what you just said, Jonathan, was the, the staff relations. Because we don't, you know, we, we see Caitlin and Ed and, and Jen here, but we don't, we don't see a lot of other interactions. So that, that one's a little bit harder. And we talked about this a little bit last time, right? About what that, you know, we talked about the idea of a, like a 360 review, the, the review where, the really scary one, where you're hearing from all the people on all sides of you or whatever. We, and we, we set that aside, but I think that's, that perspective is not, that perspective from staff is not necessarily reflected here. And that, that's another thing maybe we can discuss when we get into the, the detailed bit of this.
Okay.
Um, fourth assumption is that numerical scores are not going to be as useful as actual, like, concrete feedback. I, I feel like numerical can give us maybe a place to start, which is why I kind of kept that element in so that, you know, there's at least a, you know, a starting point. It's like someone is, someone votes a one and someone's saying five. Okay, well then there's a discussion that needs to be had there. But if everyone, you know, kind of sits around for whatever, you know, whatever the numbers may end up being, that would, it would indicate that, that we're more, you know, as a board, more aligned around that element. And we can kind of have a, have a different discussion than if we're polar kind of opposites in terms of numbers.
I would say, I would say my perspective on the numbers is, you know, I think we've all been through the reviews before. It's so hard because you have different people who, you know, I may say, look, I want to put everything at a four and you may have other people who say, look, we just can't do that because of, it just doesn't look, you know, you know, we're not sure how that looks if everything is the top score. And so again, we don't have to debate this tonight, but I, I would, I would just say I would be okay if the final product didn't have numbers. It was all kind of the substance rather than kind of a numerical point. I guess is, is what I was trying to say.
I, I completely agree, actually. I, I think, I think having, the only reason I left it in is, again, as like a starting point so that we could see as we, as we get together as a board to say, okay, well, where is it that we're the furthest apart in our, in our reflection on this particular criteria? And that'll just give us a way to, to start that conversation in a different way than it would be if we're all like, oh yeah, fives. Fives across the board. There might not be as much discussion around whatever that element would be. So, but in the end, you're right, you know, if the final report or the thing that we kind of hand over or talk through the director with does not include any numbers, I think that, I think you're right. I don't know if it does need to. It's a really good point. Um, number five is just, this is.
Especially appreciated this bullet, this next bullet.
Yeah. Some of those forms were super long and like super detailed and you had to fill these things out and there's averaging. And I'm like, okay, this needs to be, you know, needs to be fair and it needs to involve thought. We don't want it to be like, oh, you're just, you know, circling some numbers and you're done. But we all are, you know, busy people. Julie's a busy person, you know, it shouldn't involve a lot of time for her to prepare for this thing. It shouldn't involve us a lot of time to prepare, to prepare for the thing. I just, in terms of simplicity, I tried to keep it on balance on that side of things. Um, and then the last two, I, I, I think this is, I'd really like to hear more about this. Again, maybe not this meeting, but in terms of the process, I would, I, I think that the evaluation should, the board evaluation component of the three kind of components that are proposed here, I, I do think it should involve a conversation. I don't think it should be, you know, we all, I think the alternative, one alternative would be, we all submit, we all fill out a thing, we submit it, and then that's the thing that Julie kind of gets and reads or, or that's the thing we present. I think because we're all different people, we have different perspectives, Jonathan, as you mentioned before, we have different experiences with the library and with, with Julie and the staff. I think, I think having that conversation among ourselves is, is an important part of the process, even though to, to the point above it, it might take a little more time. So I'm curious, I'm curious to hear what people think about that. And the second one, I think, is, is a part of it too, that in some cases, we might not completely come to an agreement about, about the final kind of thing that we hand over. And I mean, it's, it's, there might be different, again, different opinions about any one of these criteria and that, that if there are different opinions, that probably should come out in, in the final product. So I think, I feel like these are the, probably the most controversial of the, of the assumptions. So I'd be curious to hear what you all have to think about that.
I would tend to agree with you, Carissa, about us discussing it and kind of producing more of like a cohesive thought versus like your, you know, 14 random things, you kind of make heads or tails of what the general consensus is. And I think, yeah, like you said, even if there is a disagreement, kind of noting that, but still it being part of like one fluid document is kind of probably more helpful for Julie and for us too, to kind of understand where we all see her position.
And Carissa, are you planning to be the designated trustee to present the board evaluation?
We can discuss that. I mean, I'm open to it, it's fine, yeah.
Chris is doing great at this. I think we.
I know. This, that was really what you have put together so far is really excellent. And then is that same designated board trustee going to be the one to talk about a merit increase? Were you thinking two different people?
Well, I think it'd be a discussion we'd have together, right? That, that would be part of the, the discussion where we come and say, okay, well, here's, you're all, here are the way we feel about these different criteria. And, and here's where we land and what does that, and then, and then what does that mean for the merit increase? And yeah, that person could be the person that like delivers the message or whatever. But I, but it's not, I think that's the, that's a thing that we come to as a, as an agreement, as a consensus, as a board at the conclusion of the, of the forms, of the, you know, the self-evaluation, of the board evaluation. of the forms of the, you know, the self evaluation of the board evaluation of, you know, updates on goals and things like that.
I think that's fine, and I would also like to second the business of conversation. Sometimes in conversation, we trigger things in each other that might otherwise be missed also. And I think coming to some form of, if not consensus, at least everybody gets a chance to to voice their opinions and think through them and bounce them off each other. And I think that's that's important to specify.
Yeah, thanks, Dave.
And I just want to note that if the merit increase is going to be part of the conversation, you should just be aware of the budgetary impacts of that and whether or not you align a timeline to our normal budget process. Or if you just say, it's okay, we don't care if that's going to be a little different.
I would tend to go with the latter point and not, you know, amend the budget or anything like that based, you know. I think that the you know, the merit, it kind of like some of the other points we've talked about as far as when we were discussing numbers. They're not necessarily the material to each individual person, but not necessarily to the whole budget. This is my point. And Julie, can you, and maybe this, we can, I'm not sure if this is the right time to have this conversation, but I don't think since I've been on the board or at least as the president, we've ever had kind of a meeting without you because I think that in and obviously that would be good because even this, I mean, I think this is great to have this, but it's it also, I think, obviously kind of frees people up. You know, posit, you know, in in ways just to kind of have that. And so just maybe you and I or just let us know like, how do we do that and get that scheduled? And presumably it's a private meeting, so it's not open to the public and kind of how that process works so that we can have, you know, we can have these conversations.
Yeah, and that's a that's one of those things that is prescribed by the Open Meetings Act because it is would be about the evaluation of a single employee, me, you could have a closed meeting for that. It would have to be posted and actually it does have to be recorded. However, it the recording does not stays closed until and unless the board agrees that that meeting should be opened. A lot of boards do just very, very brief written minutes about this sort of evaluation process and just kind of say that the, you know, the final document that comes out of it is the, you know, part of the record or whatever.
Because I wouldn't mind and we can, how soon do we need to schedule something like that? I'm just thinking like even for the next meeting or the meeting after that where we have something eat like maybe that's seven versus 7:30 or after the meeting, you know, something like that so that we can just keep this keep this moving forward.
And that that absolutely you can do any of those. You can do it as a special meeting. All it has to be is noticed 48 hours in advance. So whenever you guys agree, we just have to put the agenda out there that this is what's happening. And the only portion that would be a board action that would need to be on a regular agenda would be agreeing to a merit increase if you did that.
We would have to put that on like have that in a regular meeting.
Yeah, yeah. Or have an open portion following the closed session.
Okay.
And would keep our own notes instead of Caitlin or our minutes, so.
Yes, someone would it would be the designated minute taker and would provide those to Caitlin.
Yeah, back in the in the dark ages, earlier in my term, when we actually used to do this, we had a regularly regularly scheduled meeting and we but usually with a little more abbreviated agenda. And then we voted to go into executive session and excused the staff. They went home. And the director, the library board members remained and did the evaluation and came up with consensus or at least decisions. And then we came back into general session and voted what we had to vote, and then we all went home. So it was it was a regularly scheduled meeting and it just the executive session was at the end of it, and I think that worked okay. Timing of the thing, I don't think we should try, I going back to your original question. I think we need to do this after the budget process. If we try to get this done before the budget, it's way too early in the year. And I think we're much better prepared to make a an evaluation after the budget process in October, November, something of that timeframe. And incorporated in the budget, however, we we need to, but I don't want to do it before the budget process.
So anybody have any on when we would like to have, would someone like to have it kind of the way that Dave had mentioned or would maybe have it after next month's meeting or or does anybody have any thoughts on that?
How about November?
Before the meeting or after or?
Well, I think at the end.
Okay.
Would be the the most reasonable thing because then the director doesn't have to and the assistant directors and they don't, the staff doesn't have to hang around while we're doing it.
And maybe Dave, maybe in November, we can get together in person.
What a concept.
Well, that's what I was gonna say. I mean, we are in a virtual atmosphere right now, so we have to take that into consideration if we want to do it on a different Zoom account or.
It has to be recorded, Kim, anyway. So I mean, to a certain extent, it's it's going to be, it is, you know, kind of out there.
I don't think it needs to be video recorded.
Oh, does it? It doesn't need. Okay.
Um, if it's a if it's a an online meeting, you could all turn your video off. But yeah, we would do it in this format. If we did it following the regular board meeting, Ed could make one of you the organizer. And and then you would just be the one who shuts it down. And then we would just rely on Ed's discretion in separating that from the regular meeting for the recording purposes.
I can host a different platform too, but it it does not have to be video recorded. It's just that we're in a virtual atmosphere.
It just has to be recorded.
Yeah, it has to be recorded.
And the recording has to be part of our records.
And the go to meeting part, we'll be able to see each other, but it just won't be, we won't have had the video camera.
Okay, let's plan tentatively doing it after the November regularly scheduled meeting, if that's okay with everyone.
Just just a clarification, it's actually part of the regularly scheduled November meeting. We go into executive session and then we have to come out of executive session and complete the meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it would simply be like the last agenda item before adjournment.
Okay.
And if you felt like you needed a like a merit increase in open session, that's where we would put it. So there would be closed session. Very often, what I what you do is you just put, you know, the closed session and you cite why you're going into closed session. And then there's a an action following closed session item and then adjournment. And then if there's no action following your closed session, you just skip that agenda item.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much, Carissa, for putting this together and spearheading this. Yes, it's a great, you know, great work product, and I think we're moving in the right direction, finally.
Great, thank you.
Julie, we'll get there.
I have faith in you.
Okay, we're on to do we, let's just, so we're not going to have a formal vote on this tonight. It doesn't sound like this will be an unfinished business for next month or, you know, leave it on the agenda for next month. Okay.
Yeah, can can we come to an informal notion at least that next month we'll complete the process and then in November, we'll actually have the executive session. Is that the consensus? Since we sometimes cancel the December meeting.
Subject to Carissa's thoughts on this.
Yeah. I think that's fine. I mean, yeah, as long as you kind of we come prepared to like do do that thing next time, so that we're ready to go.
Okay. Sounds good. All right, I think that means we have an informal agreement. We're now on to agenda item. Thank you very much, Carissa, for that presentation. We're now on to agenda item nine C, which is the COVID-19 response in reopening phasing plan. This is something that we've done now for, I think, maybe six months in a row. And what we're looking for here is a motion, unless anyone has any questions or comments on this item.
I just want to point out that we did make some rather significant changes to phase four of the COVID plan. So if you want to take a look at those, make sure you've seen it does reflect that this the original plan was a very linear process for reopening. And what we've found is that our process has been very much not linear. So we did rewrite that phase four and it is now restoring services and hours. And so it just kind of broadens the way that we do that because it had originally said that we were going back to regular hours immediately. But that's not the way it's shaking out. So I just wanted to point that out.
Okay, thank you. If anyone has any questions or comments, just let me know. Otherwise, we're looking for a motion to reauthorize temporary policy, reauthorize the library director, library director to make temporary temporary policy changes in consultation with the board president with the within the parameters of the COVID-19 response and reopening phasing plan as presented. We have a motion to approve that.
Delete.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, thank you. We have motion that has been seconded to authorize the library director to make temporary policy changes in consultation with the board president and within the parameters of the COVID-19 response reopening phasing plan. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Gagani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
President Graber?
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved agenda item nine C. We're now on to agenda item number 10, the library director's report. Julie.
All right, included in your board packet along with my report is a special report on curbside service from our circulation manager, Christine Lees. So take a look at that. I did also want to comment that we are running at about 75% of last year's circulation. And what we found through, at least through our Swan peers, is that that is right about where most of the libraries in Swan are sitting right now. It was very interesting. One of the I attended a meeting by Savannah Orange Boy, which does data for libraries. And they they compile a lot of data for a lot, do a lot of data analysis for libraries across the country. And they're seeing a very similar pattern. And one of the things that they brought to light is the fact that we aren't getting as many new users through the pandemic. They can see that through the statistics and that that is actually where where that comes from is the the without getting the new users, we aren't getting the additional use. So our in our regular turnover of users as people fall off, there are usually, you know, the attend the other side of people coming on to using the library. And we've we've really only had the loss of folks. So that was an interesting. Hi, Rashida, we're just finishing up the meeting. So if you'll just hang on, hang out with us for a few while we.
Oh, of course, my pleasure. I'm so sorry. I was sitting in my own Zoom thinking I was waiting on you all. No worries at all.
That's okay. You're still waiting on us just in a new venue.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks, Julie.
All right, so I just also want to let you all know to have a look at both the Journey to Janus sculpture that is nice and clean if you make it into the library and also our new two newest artworks donated by the Downers Grove Public Library Foundation are now hanging in the lobby. That's not their their forever home, but they are at least with us. So if you make it into the lobby, make sure you look. And we have gotten early word that the per capita grant requirements for the 2021 application will be, they haven't released it officially, but we believe it will just be for the board and the staff to read through the whole new serving our public 4.0 standards for Illinois Public Libraries, which we'd already asked you to do. So hopefully that will indeed be the only requirement. And that's all I had.
All right, thank you very much. We're now on to agenda item number 11, trustee comments and requests for information. Do we have any trustee comments or requests for information?
Just a quickie, the journey to the Journey to Janus sculpture looks like it did when it was installed and it is beautiful. If anything, it's better than when it was installed. Maybe it's just because it got so dirty. But all three sections of it are just wonderful. Thank you for spearheading that.
All right, thank you very much. Any other trustee comments or requests for information? Just so everyone knows what you may know this already, but what I'll do as the as the next agenda item is adjourn the meeting and then just stay on the line and we'll then pick up with the second meeting with Rashida Graham Washington. So there are no additional trustee comments or requests for information. I will move on to agenda item number 12 and hereby adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone.